Counsel, please come to order and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in our hearts.
Clerk, please call the roll.
DeYoung.
Here.
Bachobin.
Here.
Branderhorst.
Here.
Dan Strayland.
Here.
Skeba.
Here.
Peterson.
Here.
All good, thank you. We've got full staff here tonight, so I'd like to welcome everyone again this evening. It's great to see every chair full, that's great to see. Moving on to the mayor's comments, I'd like to announce that there will be a planning and or a policy and planning meeting following the regular council meeting to discuss the recreational uses of Big Rock Park as well as the potential extension and expansion of the Oskaloosa Street corridor moratorium. We'll move on to the approval of the tentative agenda. Do I hear motion for approval?
So moved.
Support.
Van Strayland and support DeYoung, discussion. Seeing none, all in favor, please say yes, opposed, no. Clerk call the roll.
Dan Strayland.
Yes.
DeYoung.
Yes.
Bachobin.
Yes.
Branderhorst.
Yes.
Skeba.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
Motion carried. Item number three, I would like to appoint Don Andre to the Historic Preservation Commission. Don Andre to serve on the Pella Historic Preservation Commission. Mr. Andre was born and raised in New Jersey. He graduated from Central College with a bachelor's in management and theater. Prior to his retirement, from Key Co-op, where he served as the Construction Services and Lumber Department Manager, Mr. Andre was part owner of Straw Town Furniture. Mr. Andre is a miller at the Vermeer Mill and also serves on the Vermeer Mill Oversight Committee. Mr. Andre owns two houses in the Collegiate Historic District. He and his wife enjoy long-distance motorcycle trips, and if approved, Mr. Andre's term would expire on January 1, 2022. Do I hear a motion for approval?
So moved.
Support.
Branderhorst and support Skeba, discussion. Seeing none, all in favor, please say yes, opposed, no. Clerk call the roll.
Branderhorst.
Yes.
Skeba.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
DeYoung.
Yes.
Bachobin.
Yes.
Dan Strayland.
Yes.
Skeba.
Yes.
Motion carried. Now we will go to the public forum, and I'd like to remind everyone that may be here to talk about Big Rock Park. Your opportunity to discuss that will be under other business, public forum, more in the towards the end of the meeting rather than at this particular time. This time is really specifically geared towards the motions and agenda items such as petitions and communications and resolutions. So at this point, I'll open it up to the public forum for any comments regarding any agenda items. If you have a comment, please step up to the microphone, state your name, where you live, and keep your comments to three minutes, please. Seeing no takers, we will move on to the approval of the consent agenda. Do I hear a motion for approval?
So moved.
Bachobin.
Support.
Support Peterson, discussion. Seeing none, all in favor, please say yes, opposed, no. Clerk call the roll.
Bachobin.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
DeYoung.
Yes.
Branderhorst.
Yes.
Dan Strayland.
Yes.
Skeba.
Yes.
Motion carried. Move on to petitions and communications. Item number one, a special event request for a movie in the park with the young professionals. Mike, could you please explain?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd be happy to. I'd like to direct everyone to the big board for a presentation on this item. As Mayor Mueller said this evening, this particular request comes to us from the young professionals of Pella, and specifically it is for movie night in Pella. The night event is on Friday, June 28, and we do have a list of the Senate clients who will take down the movie, the movie that's being produced in the city council or if the city council will approve this application. It is important to note, Mr. Mayor, that the city department has reviewed the application, and the city staff has received an NLP and insurance certificate, and we are recommending approval this evening.
Thank you, Mike. Do I hear motion for approval?
So moved.
DeYoung, support Bachobin. Discussion? Did I assign you to that one, Tony? I heard a support down there somewhere. You had that look on your face. Any discussion? I've actually seen that movie just recently. It's very good. I recommend it if anybody's not seen it. If you're a moviegoer, please go see it.
Do you have a dragon?
Do I have a dragon? No, I don't. But I know how to train one. All right, seeing no discussion, all in favor, please say yes, opposed, no. Clerk call the roll.
DeYoung.
Yes.
Bachobin.
Yes.
Branderhorst.
Yes.
Dan Strayland.
Yes.
Skeba.
Yes.
Motion carried. Item number two, new Class C liquor license with outdoor service, Sunday sales and catering for the Pella Golf and Country Club. Mike, could you explain, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd be happy to. And this particular request, as Mayor Mueller stated, comes to us from the Pella Golf and Country Club, and specifically what we are entertaining this evening is a new Class C liquor license with outdoor service and Sunday sales and catering. Now, it is important to note that the applicant is requesting this license in place of their current Class A liquor license, which does not allow catering privileges, and that's our understanding why they're requesting that Class C on this. And so it is important to note that counsel under our third bullet point, if our counsel were to approve this change or grant this license, it would allow the licensee to provide alcoholic beverages at private social gatherings and private places within our community as well. Now, it is important to note, Mr. Mayor, that the term of the proposed license is for 12 months. The applicant actually completed everything online through the state of Iowa, and we have received all of our necessary information, and as a result, city staff is recommending approval this evening.
Thank you, Mike. Do I hear motion for approval?
So moved.
Peterson.
Support.
Support Bachobin. I know I heard it that time. Any discussion?
Just out of curiosity, when a caterer is allowed to serve alcohol, the legal encumbrances fall upon at home? The caterer or the place that they are serving in?
So the caterer is responsible if someone's like over-served or something, there's an issue, it's the caterer, it's the licensee, so whoever holds the license is responsible for that.
Any other questions? Seeing none, all in favor, please say yes, opposed, no. Clerk call the roll.
Peterson.
Yes.
Bachobin.
Yes.
Branderhorst.
Yes.
Dan Strayland.
Yes.
Skeba.
Yes.
DeYoung.
Yes.
Motion carried. On to resolution, item number one, resolution 5981 entitled "The Resolution Adopting the Annual Wage Scale." Mike, could you explain that, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd be happy to, and I would like, as the mayor said, we are talking about annual wage and adjustment for city employees, and this would be for the fiscal year 2020, which would start on July 1, 2019, and extend through June 30 of 2020. It is important, and 2020, excuse me, it is important to note that this same proposal was discussed with city council during policy and planning on June 4. Now, as the council is aware, but maybe for members in the audience and for those that are watching at home, in 2018, we hired a firm, was Conjuring Associates, and they performed a wage scale analysis and actually looked at our entire workforce, not only from competitiveness from a wage scale perspective, but also job responsibilities, and we developed a new classification system. That was approved by council in 2018. Now, one of the recommendations from the consultant back in 2018, in order to keep the scale competitive or up to date, they recommended an annual adjustment that would be linked to the Employment Cost Index, which is published by the United States Bureau of Labor Statistics. Again, the intent on this was to keep the scale up to date, and the theory behind this is, is once the scale is up to date, we should be in the marketplace or competitiveness when we go to attract and then approve additional or new employees to the city's workforce, but actually to be able to retain quality employees for the city of Pella as well. That particular index, the latest 12 months that we had, was from March 2018 through March of 2019. The percentage adjustment was 2.5%. What is being proposed this evening is a 2.5% increase to the entire wage scale for the city of Pella's employees. The annual cost on this adjustment, we believe, is just going to be over $133,000, which also includes both Vic and the city of Pella's responsibility for their respective pensions for the city's workforce as well. So what this proposal, this resolution, would do, would increase the entire wage scale by 2.5%, and approved by the council this evening, and will become effective on July 1 of this year. And, Mr. Mayor, I believe that concludes our presentation this evening. We're unhappy answering questions the mayor and council may have on this item.
Thank you, Mike. Do I hear motion for approval?
So moved.
Skeba.
Support.
And support Van Strayland. Discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please say yes, opposed, no. Clerk call the roll.
Skeba.
Yes.
Dan Strayland.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
DeYoung.
Yes.
Bachobin.
Yes.
Branderhorst.
Yes.
Motion carried. What I do want to point out to everybody in the audience and also on TV if you're watching, is this is not the first time we've seen it. We don't take those kind of decisions lightly. We've gone through this over and over and over again through budget sessions and everything. So when we vote quickly on those kind of things with not a lot of discussions, because we've had lots of discussion in other open meetings, so we've had the opportunity to work out those details. So we're well-versed on those things. So we'll move on now to item number two, resolution number 5982 entitled "The Resolution Adopting the Health Plan Premiums." Mike, could you explain, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd be happy to. And as the mayor said this evening, what we're talking about is the healthcare premiums for the city's healthcare program as well as our dental care program. And once again, we did discuss this with council during our policy and planning meeting on June 4. The resolutions that are being presented this evening under this item are the same that we discussed on June 4. Now, in explaining the healthcare issue, and this is something that I would say is not uncommon across the industry and is certainly not unique to city governments, containing healthcare costs, I would say overall, when you look at our model and what we've done over the past, I'd really say 68 years with our approach to healthcare, I think it's been relatively successful on it. However, this year, due to the increases that we have for our self, for our fully insured component of the plan, which is through well-marked through cross Blue Shield, we believe premiums need to increase by 10%. This increase was budgeted in the current fiscal year, or not the current fiscal year, for fiscal year 2020, but if approved this evening for the city employees, what this means is the cost of a single plan, it would increase from $497 per month to $547 per month. The family increase would increase from $1,047 per month to $1,152 per month. Now, as far as the policy on this item that is concerned, employees are responsible for 10%, that's historically been the case over the years, with this, and the city of Pella's responsible for 90%. Now, in summary, staff is recommending approval of this resolution, which would increase healthcare premiums by 10%. If approved, this change would be effective on July 1 of this year, and for each, for each, two, and that's it. Okay, thank you.
Very good, thank you, Mike. Do I hear motion for approval?
So moved.
Branderhorst and support Van Strayland, discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please say yes, opposed, no. Clerk call the roll.
Branderhorst.
Yes.
Dan Strayland.
Yes.
Skeba.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
DeYoung.
Yes.
Bachobin.
Yes.
Motion carried. On to number three, resolution number 5983 entitled "The Resolution Approving a Group Dental Insurance Policy with a Delta Dental and Adopting the Dental Delta Dental Plan Premiums." Mike, could you explain, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd be happy to, and as the mayor said, this is the dental side, and it's the same issue. We discussed this issue at June 4 policy and planning meeting. It's very important to note that this program, as far as dental insurance for the city of Pella, is completely self-funded by the city of Pella's employees. Based on our review of the dental rates with it, our insurance broker conducted a comprehensive review of this, and what they're proposing with this is to switch to a fully insured plan with Delta Dental. If approved by council, what would happen this evening is the new single rates, the single-family rates would be roughly $25.34 per month, the family rates would be $92.38 per month. Once again, employees are responsible for 100% of this premium, and as a result, our recommendation from our broker, Mr. Mayor, we believe that this is the most prudent way to keep costs down for the city's dental, or dental coverage with quality healthcare, or dental coverage, rather. So we are recommending approval of this resolution, which would be approved by the council, will be effective on July 1 of this year.
Good, thank you, Mike. Do I hear motion for approval?
So moved.
Skeba.
Support.
And support Van Strayland. Discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please say yes, opposed, no. Clerk call the roll.
Skeba.
Yes.
DeYoung.
Yes.
Bachobin.
Yes.
Branderhorst.
Yes.
Motion carried. On to number four, resolution number 5984 entitled "A Resolution Adopting the Revised Personnel Policy Manual." Mike, could you explain, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd be happy to, and once again, I'd refer everyone's attention to the big board for a presentation on this item. What we're talking about is proposed changes to the city's personnel policy manual, and as once again, we did discuss these on June 4. And I would characterize most of these changes as what we would do as regular house cleaning items on an annual basis. What I mean by house cleaning is usually in the city's classification structure for employees, particularly with job titles, is there's usually changes within job classifications. How this usually happens is if a position becomes vacant, what we do is what most of you do in your own businesses, you reanalyze that position, and sometimes there's changes to that position, sometimes there's even title changes to that position as well. And occasionally, what happens during the year, we get requests to reclassify or review employees' positions and how they rank within the pay grade, and there's various adjustments with those. What you have as a component of the personnel policy changes is we have new positions that are being added to our wage scale, such as the telecommunications director that we're currently in the process of recruiting for. In addition, we have various house cleaning items that deal with various job classifications that occurred through the year that were part of the new wage scale. In addition, what we have as far as the cleanup items on it is, in transitioning over recently, within the last 24 months, both the electric union and the Public Works Union decertified, and so we no longer have union employees at the city of Pella. So our personnel manual was full of references to collective bargaining units, and so this is literally cleanup that we have, is there are no longer unions at the city of Pella, so we're removing all language that refers to collective bargaining units as well. In addition, that we do have one change that we are, that is somewhat different than what we have is currently, within our policy, we have when the city of Pella employee starts with the city of Pella, they begin accruing vacation and sick leave time for the day they start working, but under the current regulations, we have in place that they cannot use any leave time within the first six months of employment. And this is something that is usually an issue anytime you recruit an employee to the city of Pella. It's something that was more prevalent, I would say, 15 years ago in the workforce than it is nowadays with it. And after reviewing this and discussing this with our employees, this request came from the city of Pella's employees with this. We are recommending this change as well. Once again, we discussed all these changes on June 4. There's nothing new that's being presented this evening, Mr. Mayor, and we are recommending approval of these changes, and if approved by the city council, would be effective on July 1 of this year.
Good, thank you, Mike. Do I hear motion for approval?
So moved.
DeYoung.
Support.
Support Peterson. Discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please say yes, opposed, no. Clerk call the roll.
DeYoung.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
Bachobin.
Yes.
Branderhorst.
Yes.
Dan Strayland.
Yes.
Skeba.
Yes.
Motion carried. Item number five, resolution number 5985 entitled "The Resolution Approving the Form of and Authorizing Execution of the Application for Voluntary Annexation of Real Estate to the City of Pella, Iowa." Mike, could you explain, please?
I guess, Mr. Mayor, I'd be happy to, and once again, I'd like to refer everyone's attention to the big board for approval of this item. And ultimately, what this resolution does, it authorizes the execution of an application for a voluntary annexation at the city soccer complex, and we'll explain this here very shortly. By the 2020 budget, as council is aware, this is currently, or actually, this would be the fiscal year starting July 1 of 2019, we have a proposed improvement, and we'll be showing this up on the big board here very shortly, that includes an asphalt overlay of 218th Avenue, and approximately this runs from Neal Drive down to the Shady Brook subdivision. The estimated cost of this public improvement is $463,000. Now, when we look at the road as it currently sits today, approximately 24% of this road segment is within the corporate limits. If the city soccer complex is considered part of this, is the voluntary annexation, plus the parties that have voluntarily agreed to come into the city limits at about this 218th Avenue, I believe we're over closer to 90% of the road segment that is in with this as well. So when we look at this, the key issue why annexation is necessary before you can do this improvement is, under Iowa law, when you expend funds, usually it's associated funds have to be typically associated within the corporate limits or so on. So we're currently performing an annexation in the area of 218th Avenue on this, and the ultimate goal of this is to have everything within the city limits so we can perform this project that is currently scheduled for next fiscal year. So let's go ahead, please, Court. And as we said, here is the city soccer complex out here in Orientate, folks. Idaho Drive is located right over here, Neal Drive is right over here, the Shady Brook subdivision is located right down here, the city soccer complex is right here, and by annexing this in, this is approximately 38 acres right here, and what this would do, include the city limits, and then also we also in the process of an 80/20 non-consenting to annexation of here, involving these properties. Most of the property owners referenced in addition to the city soccer complex are, have voluntarily committed to annexing into the city of Pella as well. So once again, what this resolution simply does, it authorizes the mayor and city clerk, I believe, to approve an annexation application to annex the city soccer complex into the city of Pella, Mr. Mayor. And with that, I believe that concludes our presentation this evening. We're more than happy answering questions the mayor and council may have on this item.
Thanks, Mike. Do I hear motion for approval?
So moved.
Skeba.
Support.
Support Bachobin. Discussion?
Has notification been sent to the two that have not voluntarily annexed?
Not yet. So this basically just authorizes the city to sign its own application, and then our schedule is that next month, the whole notification and setting a public hearing and all of that will happen.
Okay, and how long do you think it will take, Christine?
Let me pull up my schedule.
Just approximately. I guess what I'm getting at here is, we are looking to pave that road.
Right.
And do that this year.
So, I mean, it is a process. The city will hold its public hearing on the annexation in August, but then it does, because we do have a couple of non-consenting property owners, it does have to go to the city development board in Des Moines, and so that takes another 60 days, 90 days, depending upon their schedule, before it's finally approved.
And I think where we're at is, we tend to sort them back on the project and talk about the terms of the annexation, the timeline Christine referenced, and the expectation of when the project would be done, and probably, just so we're not confused on fiscal years really talking about which construction season we're talking about, whether that's 2019 or 2020 on that. So there will be a policy and planning session coming up on that very subject, but the first item of business is we have to have our own property annexed.
Right, we have, the city has to sign its own application first, and then everybody gets notified about the public hearing, so that will be happening next.
There's just some votes, John, we have.
And have been for one.
Yeah, well, rightfully so.
It's been a process. Thank you.
Any other discussion or questions? Seeing none, all in favor, please say yes, opposed, no. Clerk call the roll.
Skeba.
Yes.
Dan Strayland.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
DeYoung.
Yes.
Bachobin.
Yes.
Branderhorst.
Yes.
Motion carried. We will move on to other business, public forum. First, I'll ask for any council members, if they have any other business that needs to be addressed and brought before the council for consideration at this time.
The only thing I'm, Denny?
Yeah.
Standing there in plain sight. How much interest, have we taken bids on that Usport Elliott? Have we gone out for that?
Thursday, 11 o'clock.
Okay, well, it looked like we got some good interest.
Three or four people looking at it. As many questions as we expect, I'll show up and tell them. One of them is, oh, sure.
All right, thank you.
And just to be clear for everybody, the project on the bridge out there is a DOT project, not a city project?
That is correct. That's valid.
I just want to stop the slings and arrows, so.
That traffic control plan is not Plan F or G. We think it is optimized, it's as good as it's going to get at this point. Unfortunately, our signals couldn't coordinate our signal, there were just major repairs to be done to that bridge and some drainage improvements. So, very little, it's a 25 working day contract, so decent weather, it should be five weeks.
The goal is to resurface that, to take the pooling out of it in the winter?
They're all sliding drainage tools on the bridge, why they were originally, nobody can tell us.
So we won't have a skating rink there anymore?
Exactly, because if you remember, the chief of life's growing up.
Yep, very good.
We, you know, we, I encourage the public, the thing that still fails us once in a while, when people get impatient, for the three or four or five to run the red light, they tear, it breaks down on the other end, and people are, you know, fighting each other, getting into each other, and on some of the, and finds the constructions on, you know.
Very good, thank you. That's a fair warning, so I will make note of it on my own behalf, and everybody else can take care of themselves, how's that?
Clark Street's looking real popular.
Yeah, that's right, yeah, that's right, yeah. Any other comments from the council or questions? Very good, and I will now open it up for the public forum to make comments on any issues that they would like to be brought forth to the council at this time. Please step forward, state your name, where you're from, where you live, and please make your comments three minutes or less, and I know Doug's got it real quick, so if you don't mind, I'll let him hop in here.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My name is Doug Polking, a member of St. Mary's Parish out on 218th Place. First of all, we would like to thank the council for working with us over the years to endeavor to try and get the road paved. What I present to you this evening is a petition that has been signed by concerned citizens throughout the, our parish and also the community, that encourages the city council of Pella, Marion County Board of Supervisors, and St. Mary's Parish to work together to get 218th Place paved, and for, primarily for safety. And that is what I'm presenting to you today. And that is what I'm presenting to you today.
And we will make sure that this becomes part of the public record. And so, do I have a motion to accept this petition? Bakalovin, Port, Ski Bow? All in favor, please say yes. opposed, no, clerk call roll.
Bakalovin?
Yes.
Ski Bow?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
De Young?
Yes.
Randor Horse? Yes. Van Stryland?
Yes.
So, this is now officially accepted by the city and goes into the record, so these will become public records and available to anybody who's interested in them on the website. We'll also give a count of the number of signatures and everything that's on here as part of a recap, so appreciate it.
Thank you.
And we will try to do our best to work together.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Did you miss your? Mr. Corbin, do you also have a real?
It's okay.
Yep, absolutely. I have a feeling that once we get started on another subject, I don't know what that might be, but I think we're probably going to be taking it out before anybody's time on that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My name's David Corbin. I'm Vice President with Vermeer Corporation. And I'm not here to ask you for anything or complain about anything. I'm here to thank you. I've got a picture up here. Today, we had a Ride Your Bike to Work Day. I want to thank you on behalf of all of our Vermeer team members. You know, the safety of our team members is our top priority. Behind that, we're interested in developing our team members, their mind, their body and spirit. And by constructing this bike path along 240th Street, connecting the elementary school with our bike path along Vermeer Road, you've accomplished all of those things. And I just want to give you a heartfelt thank you to you, Mr. Mayor, the city council, the administration, and to all of Pella residents for funding this effort. Thank you.
Today, I'd like to thank Vermeer Corporation for your participation.
You're welcome. You're welcome. Yes.
And public safety is always everyone's concern, and it's, this has been a long project, and I know everybody is very thankful and happy to have it completed, so.
Thanks.
All right. Very good. I will now open the floor to any other comments, any other citizens that would like to address the council. Please step forward. Again, give us your name, where you live, and limit your comments to three minutes.
Mr. Mayor and city council, my name is Jim Brandl. I live at 1227 Shadow Lane here in Pella. I'm a retired businessman, and I've lived here in Pella for 50 years. And since I've retired, I've been involved with a number of charitable foundations. And an important tool for foundations are endowment funds. These are special instruments which allow the donor to make a monetary gift to permanently establish a fund, which then uses the money by investing it, and only the income from the investment is used to support the specific organization or interest field. The donor specifies how the earnings will be spent. It seems that the gift in 1958 by Pete and Lucille Kuiper of the Big Rock Park is strikingly similar to an endowment fund. The gift of the 83 acres of virgin timber forest was given to the city, not for 50 or 60 years, but permanently, with very specific instructions. If you've read the instructions or the letter that Pete Kuiper included with his gift, and I quote, "It is our desire that this timber be maintained as a recreation area and the natural state be retained as far as practical." Pete Kuiper then goes on and specifies that only walking or bridle pass will be built in the park. And he also says that it is their hope, meaning he and Lucille's hope, that the people of Pella will derive much pleasure in the years to come from the park, preserved as far as possible in its natural native state. Very clear and explicit instructions and expectations. Notice how many times Mr. Kuiper specified "natural state." Like an endowment fund, it is a permanent gift with explicit instructions for the park's use. Since the city of Pella accepted the gift and thereby agreed to the wishes and the instructions of the donor, then how can it now justify permitting disc golf course and mountain bike trails? Even though 60-plus years have transpired since the gift was given, the wishes and the instructions of the donor are still very valid. However, as you may know, the quitclaim deed provided a method for the city to change the permissive uses of this property. By permissive uses, I think the term means the natural native state of the park. And by changing this, the permissive uses, can be done by a unanimous vote of the city council, with the notice of this vote published in the newspaper of a general circulation in the city of Pella for eight consecutive weeks. I guess the question I have is, has this been followed? So, I would encourage the council to pause, rethink, and more fully research the long-term impact of the natural native state of Big Rock Park before making any final decisions on the two projects, both the disc golf and the mountain bike trail, before choosing one of the three options outlined for you by your staff. After rethinking, researching this impact, then I think you would be in a better position to make a decision. Thank you.
Thank you for having me. This discussion, mayor and council. I'm Robin Martin. I am a retired librarian for Central College. My family and I have lived in Pella for more than 50 years, and for more than 30 years, we've had the good fortune to live next to Big Rock Park. We've picnicked and cross-country skied, walked and climbed the rock with and without our children and now grandchildren. We've hunted for mushrooms, and we've enjoyed the wildflowers each spring and the bird-like animals year-round. We always understood the park to be left to all of Pella's citizens and to remain in its natural state. All of us understood the rules, which are still posted, I believe, in the park. No bikes, no motor vehicles, maybe even no horses. The park is highly unusual for its size, 53 acres, and location within the city limits. It's a treasure and unique in Iowa. I'm deeply disappointed that I did not learn about the disc golf course until it was well under construction. I thought I was alone with my questions, that surely someone must know what was happening. Someone with the city would have told us. When I heard the sound of saws clear-cutting swaths in the park, I was stunned. Only in the last month or so did I learn that most folks who live near the park did not know what was happening either. Documentation in tonight's packet, the staff memo B1A, provides the most information I've seen about any details regarding how the project came about. In a public discussion, as the Kuiper family requested in their quitclaim deed, we would have learned about the proposal in a timely fashion. We would have had eight weeks of public notice. We would have had the opportunity to meet and discuss any changes in the park with all the interested parties and from multiple perspectives. Even if unintentional, it is a misstep on the part of city governments. However, it's not too late to remedy if we can have time for a more complete study of the environmental impact of the disc course on the park, if we have time for more discussion and proposals that serve the best interests of all of Pella's citizens today and in the future. The park is not underutilized, though it has been neglected. It is a place that offers peace and quiet, commodities in short supply these days, and the natural beauty of a bottomland hardwood forest. We value and appreciate the many active recreational opportunities in Pella supported by the city, of which the disc golf course is now also under consideration. But our parks must also maintain passive recreation areas for health and well-being of the public and for the preservation of wildlife and the environment. What does passive recreation look like in Big Rock? It looks like walking, hiking, kids fishing and catching tadpoles, photographers, nature walking, bird watching, running, meditation, contemplation, artistic endeavor, social interaction, and citizen science. Passive recreation offers constructive, restorative, and pleasurable human benefits and fosters appreciation and understanding of open space and its purpose. It is compatible with other passive recreation uses. Disc golf is not one of those. There are four disc golf courses in Pella, I believe, already. Central College has a wonderful one that is open to the public. There's no other Big Rock Park. I ask that we postpone any changes until we've had more discussion and a formal impact study on the environment of Big Rock Park. Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor, city councilors, my name is Ryan Menzulin. I live here in Pella. I've been a part of this community my entire life. I live on Independent Street, just south of here, and I want to just make a few comments in favor of the disc golf course. Disc golf has been a part of my life for 11-plus years, since a friend introduced me to the sport during a twelve-time weekend. Over the past decade-plus, I've made lasting friendships through the sport. I've met and interacted with people I normally would have never connected with otherwise, and I've created fond memories playing courses around the country and participating in large, exciting tournaments. I've seen the sport grow exponentially in popularity over the last decade, both locally and around the world, from our local Pella Disc Golf Summer League drawing 30 to 40-plus participants each week, to playing in tournaments with 1,000-plus players registered for different levels of play. Disc golf is a safe, fun, recreational activity that people of all ages, athletic types, and activity levels can participate in. I personally played in tournaments that have included players ranging in age from pre-teens to 60-plus years old. I have five nephews and nieces that are old enough to play disc golf, and they range in age from seven to 13, and I've been able to introduce them to the sport and have even been able to take them disc golfing with me around some of the courses around the Pella area. And we've even turned it into a family event, getting my wife, parents, siblings, and their spouses involved as well. If you've never played disc golf, I would highly recommend you try it. Pete and Lucille Kuiper stated their desire for Big Rock Park to be maintained primarily as a recreation area and that the natural state be retained as far as practical, and I would argue that the new disc golf course does just that with specific regard to the large native trees. The sport of disc golf is inherently built around nature, and some of the most beautiful challenging courses in the world do not destroy the nature around them, but enhance those natural surroundings to make courses more enjoyable yet complex. It's been the goal of the Pella Disc Golf Club to create a fun yet challenging course using one of the most beautiful pieces of land in the Pella area, and we have done nothing but enhance the beauty and accessibility of Big Rock Park by clearing thick invasive underbrush and creating access points to parts of the park normally never or very rarely utilized, all while leaving the beautiful native trees untouched. We look forward to being able to continue our work out at Big Rock Park, should you give us the opportunity to do so, and I believe you will appreciate the positive addition the disc golf course will bring to the area, not only recreationally, but financially
Mr. Mayor and council members, Subhan Mordhaisen, 1517 Westwood Drive, and my house backs on to Big Rock Park. First, I would like to make a comment from the previous speaker. As far as preserving the beauty of the park, I fail to see how four-foot-by-10-foot concrete slabs preserve the natural beauty of the park. I'm very offended by the slabs going down. They have not, they were just constructed in April, and I believe it was the 20th, they posted everything on Facebook as to the pouring of the concrete slabs all over the park. What I'm going to use my time for is addressing what the Kuiper family decedents decided to share. Joan Farver wrote to Mary in February of 1999, "Thanks so much for your very nice letter about Big Rock Park and the pages enclosed about the special plants and flowers. It's exciting to know what we have right here and that you can use it in your teaching. You're putting us on the map, and I wish I could take your spring class." I'll share your letter and article with my niece Anne Lennox, who has a special interest in Big Rock, particularly trying to protect it from a possible proposed perimeter road to the west. Also with Betsy and the rest of the family, "Keep us informed of any special needs as the park was important to my father and to me. Sincerely, Joan." And then, we have additional letters to Mary Stark and Anne Lennox, the niece, and just briefly, some thoughts on funding projects in Big Rock Park. I will be willing to consider a challenge grant to support educational restoration, stewardship activities focused on topics like native flora and fauna, stewardship of the landscape, ethnobotany, invasive removal, replanting with natives where needed, watershed education, and so on and so forth. I favor approaches which emphasize positive things that people can do and experience rather than negatives." And she continues off to some degree. I believe Mary Stark has emailed all of you members of the council, and you, Mr. Mayor, and I believe Mr. Ordehde as well.
I'm not sure I received that mail.
Okay.
So, but if I haven't, I'll check with the private officials.
As far as ecological impact, she is a professor at Central?
I corrected. I believe I did receive that.
Okay.
Thank you.
I believe that the wishes of the Kuiper family have been made clear. I'm not sure what was said to Adam when they were, when that was requested. Personally, I have nothing against disc golf. I think it's a great sport. It's when Big Rock is not destroyed, but certainly damaged, and invasive species like the garlic mustard are allowed to take over, that I say, hey, play disc golf, it's a great game. Go to Central or find, go to, you know, Roberts Creek, go to Jefferson, where they have, I guess, Tuesday night events. But keep Big Rock the way it was intended and the way it was gifted. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm April Gruber. Live at 1207 Park Lane. My house is in close proximity to Big Rock Park. I have two sons, and we have enjoyed Big Rock Park since we moved to our current address 12 years ago. It has been sad to see what has transpired there in ways of illegal activity, loud music, and littering that has gone on. It has become a place for teenagers to exchange drugs, to alcohol and whatnot. And back in 1958, there's no way that the Kuiper family could have even projected that that kind of activity would be used or happening in that park. I, for one, am so excited about the disc golf course, as my son and his friends play that all the time. It gives teenagers something to do. It would attract more kids to that area, more people to that area, that would drive out the illegal activity, because it's not so, there's not many people down there, so it's secretive, it's dark, and that's happening. Lot has changed since 1958 to 2019. And it's natural state as well as practical. What was practical in 1958 isn't necessarily practical now. Times change. I'm excited. I'm hoping that the illegal activity and the questionable things that go on there and the littering will be stopped, and more positive things can happen within that park. Thanks.
Good afternoon.
Good evening. I'm Lee Collins. I live on West First Street in Pella. I've been in Pella for 40 years now, and I am representing Lisa Stravers, who is the daughter of Cheryl and Clifford Graham. And she was, when her mother spoke to her, she wanted to write this letter. You may have seen a copy already. This is what she said. "I am a Pella native who frequently gets back to visit my parents and extended family. They live rightly right outside Big Rock Park, and daily I go walking there when I'm home. Since I was a child, I have loved playing and hiking in Big Rock. I love the tranquility of the place. I love the way my children can run and play freely along the trails when I bring them home to enjoy the same sweet tract of woods I did as a child. I love how few people are there in time preserving the trails and the quiet of the place. It is a very, it is very much a place of worship for me. I love the absence of motorized vehicles and mountain bikers, and I hope to see the city vote no on a disc golf course due to the way that would change the use of the park. There are a few of the most obvious reasons to me. Increased foot traffic, micro use of alcohol, increased trash, collisions between walkers, runners, kids, dogs, and trisbees, an increase in human noise and presence that would affect wildlife and birds, a profound shift in the park's tranquil nature and the privacy it offers those who love to use it regularly. Protect Big Rock. Let it be what it is and has been for so many decades. You will lose so much more than you gain by letting such a sweet little forest be invaded by a very different mentality of use. We have such a busy world, so full of recreation and noise and commotion. Protect Big Rock, a sanctuary of peace." Signed by Lisa Stravers, daughter of Cheryl and Clifford Graham.
Marlon Reece Devers. I live at 709 Monroe Street. I've been born in Ottley, but I'm a native of Pella. I worked for this giant of a man. When I graduated from high school, I worked at Pella Corp. And I saw Pete Kuiper, and I saw what he was and what he gave to Pella and the beauty that he left in Big Rock Park. And now, we want to change everything and destroy possibly native species, I don't know. Have that, has that been checked out? Has that been checked out? I just think he has left us a legacy that is so deep, so beautiful, and why would we change what he has wished for this city of Pella to make it what it is today? Plain and simple. We have enough recreation places in other venues that we can entertain ourselves.
Thank you, Marla.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. My name is Sue Brandl. I live on Shadow Lane on the edge of Big Rock Park, and my husband and I have lived in this town for over 50 years. We have always marveled at the fact that Pella has 15 city parks, and they're all beautiful. But there's something about Red Rock Park that makes it so special, and it's more of a nature preserve. At least that's what Pete Kuiper planned for it. A place to be kept in a natural state with no bikes, no motorized vehicles, just trees and birds and animals and plants and wildflowers and some streams and walking paths and a giant glacier rock. We picnicked there as college students when the park was first given to the town, and we later hiked the trails with our daughters, and now we climb the big rock with our grandchildren. But we made a big mistake. We took the park for granted, thinking it would always be there in its natural beauty. That is, until we heard, like Robin, the chainsaws cutting away the trees and the undergrowth. "What are you doing?" We asked the young men with their power tools. "Oh, we're building a disc golf course." "Here?" "Yes, the city approved it." Why didn't we know about this? The Pella Chronicle and the town crier comes to our house weekly, and yet never did we see reporting on future changes in this park until a few weeks ago. Today, a disc golf basket hangs 12 yards from our property, and we've heard that a mountain bike trail is next. Where will that go? "Oh, on the edge of the park." "We'll follow some deer trails," is what we've heard some people say. It's obvious to us that these two sports require land, lots of land, not necessarily nature's bounty, but space. 18 holes with fairway lengths that spread throughout the park, and miles now of dirt paths which will be created for the jumps and turns of mountain biking. We're not talking about a corner of the park, but acres of activity crisscrossing and bordering the park. The scope of these projects is huge. Are we asleep at protecting this enchanting place? What will it do to the environment? What about the wildflowers and the trees and the animals that call that park home and the owls that call out to each other? When these sports have lost their luster and allure, who will bring back the park to its natural state? And will that even be possible? Please give some more consideration and study to these projects. Let's not lose this precious gift from a wise and forward-thinking man who blessed our town with this natural native setting. Thank you for listening to us tonight.
Thank you, Sue.
My name is Josh Shutterly. I've been a Pella resident since 1974. I had the luck of growing up next to Caldwell Park in Pella, and so for 25 years of my life, I guess I got to see the benefits of good use of a park and how that can affect families in a positive way. I chose to offer my time and resources towards the Big Rock Park Disc Project for several reasons. For me personally, it's a great way for me to get exercise, unwind, enjoy nature, and I think most disc golfers are very respectful of their surroundings, I've found. Number two, I have three teenage sons. As a parent, I guess I like to give them options other than technology-based things like video games. Disc golf is a wonderful competitive sport that they can get out and enjoy themselves, and that's a major thing for me as a parent. And then, just in closing, I'd just like to say, disc golf, I've found, is a great way for younger and older generations together to spend time together, and I think that's a pretty special thing that a community can provide. And I just think that there are some misconceptions maybe about the game of disc golf. And one other thing I'd like to point out is there are other disc golf courses in Pella. Central is probably the most popular one, but during various times of the year, that's not playable because of track meets at Central College cross-country. So there are times when that course is not playable also. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Josh.
Mr. Mayor, council members, my name is Scott Volby. I am probably one of the newer residents. I've only lived here in Pella for about four years. I live at 1217 Big Rock Park Road, which is the second house away from the entrance. I have a slightly different perspective. Before moving to Pella, I spent my time as a community development committee, on the building and zoning committee, on the planning commission, and a couple of terms on my city council. So when I look at projects, I look at projects slightly differently. I look at it from an urban planning perspective. So in doing my due diligence today, before coming and addressing the board, I tried to find out more information. And I was surprised by the lack of information that was available from the city on this project. I couldn't find any timelines, I couldn't find any impact studies, traffic studies, policing plans, project overviews, or even a map. And I know I talked to the clerk today thinking she could point me in the right direction, even any past meeting minutes of the city council discussing the project, and I couldn't find any of them. Living right at the entrance to Big Rock Park, what I can tell you about is it's not as, it's more heavily used. The road, the access is significantly heavily used, much more than people suspect. I end up with people often coming and driving down the street, and I have a circle driveway. So when they get to the dead-end street, they'll turn around in my driveway. I've almost gotten an accident backing out of my garage and my driveway as people find that dead-end street and try to turn around. So before we go looking for creating new problems, I think we should start addressing some of the existing problems. At the end of Big Rock Park Road, we might want to consider some kind of a turnaround so that people don't have to enter the park and turn around, because most people won't do that. They back down. They turn around in Robin's driveway, they turn around in Eric's driveway, they turn around in our driveway. Lack of a bathroom facility at the park is a big problem right now because several times in just the few years that I've lived there, I've had people come and ask if they could use my bathroom because their kids can't make it to half a mile and mile to walk home. I think it's great that people are walking, and how do you tell a mom pulling kids, no, you can't go in and use the bathroom? So, you know, that's one of the concerns that I had. I kind of felt like this one was kind of being snuck in a little bit, in that the city council hadn't addressed this plan before. So as we get ready to move forward, I'd ask that you kind of take a look at some of the existing problems, like not having the turnaround, policing and locking the park at night. I know there's a gate, but it's not often used. And additional policing, because I know there's been problems in the area, before we start bringing 2,000 or 3,000 visitors a month back into that area and creating traffic problems and the impact that that causes. I also fear that if we do continue to develop the park, we're going to have to continue to sneak in other developments that may or may not have been in the original wishes for that park, like additional bathrooms, lighting, and then always there's going to be the problem in a public facility of ADA compliance, and what do we have to do? We just saw with the soccer complex, there's $400,000 to annex and pave the road leading into there. You know, what are those kind of costs? And I'd like the city to study that a little bit more before they move forward. So what I'd like to see the council do is I'd like to see a growth policy that takes into consideration the stated uses and desires of the donation. I'd like to see the review of the existing upgrades to make sure that they're consistent with those uses. And I'd like also to address the current problems that are necessary in the park before we go adding new ones. But anyway, thank you very much for your service, because I know oftentimes serving on the city council is a thankless job. So thank you.
Thank you, Scott. I don't know where you came from, but we don't sneak things into the council. I just want to make that point that we're very open and encourage discussion, as you can see from everyone in here, and I take offense to implication, the inference that we snuck or will sneak anything in, so please.
Hello, Mayor and Councilman. My name is Susan Kuiper. I live in Thunder Ridge Road. I have a Pella pedigree when my father came over on the boat. And I just want to say, at 10 years old, I discovered Big Rock Park and loved it. It was a place I could bike to. It was freedom. It was a place my family used for Labor Day picnics. I went with my scout group. We used it a lot, and it really fed my childhood. And my plea would be that you save that for other children's livelihood. Urbanization has a deadly effect on mental health, on physical health. I'm a cancer survivor, and I'm always looking for the healthy side of things. Central Park is one of the reasons New York City is a fabulous place. It's a breathing space for all those cars and all those industries and all those industrial things. So a virgin forest can never, ever be replaced. Once you take it away, once you change the nature of it, it is never a virgin. So I'm pleading for the forest to actually leave it alone, or at least let it be as natural as possible. I know that Mr. Kuiper said two things, recreation and natural, and I think we need to really evaluate both of those. So thank you very much for hearing us tonight.
My name is Emily Van Gant. I live on Lincoln Street here in Pella. I don't have a lot to say, but I just wanted to give the perspective as somebody who wasn't born and raised in Pella and is a young adult. I went to Central for four years, and then I made the conscious choice to stay in Pella. I was offered a job where I could choose between Des Moines and Pella, and believe it or not, a young adult chose to stay here. So I chose to stay in Pella for a lot of different reasons, but one of them is I love Pella. It is a beautiful place. I love the opportunities that we have to go to the lake, to go to Big Rock Park, et cetera, and I'm excited about the opportunities that Pella has for change, development, and growth. So I just hope that we, maybe we do need to take more time, maybe we do need to do more studies, but I'd also like to consider, I did my own research on mountain bike trails and disc golf and just saw the immense benefits to people's health. Unfortunately, I believe that generations are changing, and we don't find enjoyment maybe in the same things. And so it seems that there is a large population that really enjoys nature through other opportunities and through other experiences, and so I hope you take all of those perspectives into consideration. Thanks.
Thank you.
My name is Chris Van Gant. I live at 105 Union Street here in Pella, and yes, you are seeing doubles. Emily's my sister. You know, I haven't lived in Pella for nearly as long as some of you have, although I hope to achieve that status someday. I'm also the owner of the local bike shop, Iowa Bike Co., here in town and a Central College grad. I may come with a pretty obvious stance that I think mountain bike trails at Big Rock Park is a beneficial thing for the community, but I understand that the problem at hand is that the park isn't being utilized the way that the Kuipers intended it to with their letter of donorship. The other problem is that the solution, or the other problem is that the park does not have as much traffic as what I believe the city park system would like. That conversation came up with Jeanette in the City Parks Council that park usage was low. I don't know where those numbers come from, but that was how I understood it. So I guess the goal of the Kuipers was to both allow people to participate in the space and keep it as natural as possible, when practical. Unfortunately, those two things are different. As a human race, we can't both be in a natural space and keep it natural. We created the differences between urban and forest. So I guess it's a choice of how much do we want to affect it? So that's what I'm here to say. I'm here to put mountain biking and hiking on a pretty equal scale. There's lots of studies out there that would suggest that mountain biking has a smaller impact or equal to impact than hiking, and I guess I'd like to ask the question, how did the hiking trails get approved? Was, and I think it's from the position that the Kuipers had in their letter, that they wanted to see hiking trails. They may not have known that hiking trails and mountain bike trails are very much on the same level as far as their environmental impact. So I would ask for a study to compare. How are the hiking trails affecting the environment at Big Rock Park? And how would mountain bike trails either harm it less or harm it equally? Because there is no way to absolutely prevent harm. If humans are going to be in a natural space, they will add some level of harm. Yeah, so I guess that's the question I want to ask, is how can we increase participation at Big Rock Park, get more people of all ages and families out there, and also reduce our environmental impact? Obviously, those things aren't possible to the fullest. You can't both eliminate your environmental impact and increase participation. But in regards to mountain bike trails, which is the reason why I'm speaking, I think we need to, we need to know, or at least a couple of things to consider when you're trying to answer that question, is if there are mountain bike trails built out there, they will be built by RAMB, which is Red Rock Area Mountain Bike Association, a chapter of IMBA, International Mountain Bike Association, which is held to very high standards that have improved by various environmentally conscious groups, including the Federal National Park Services, that have approved the code of mountain bike trail building by IMBA, which RAMB is a chapter of. The other things I think we consider is that I would like for mountain biking to be considered independently of the disc golf course when being weighed, when being weighed for Big Rock Park. And I'd also like to recognize mountain biking as a very nature-focused, family-friendly activity that will add immense value to Big Rock and Pella. Thanks for your time.
Thank you.
My name is Mark Van Bonnen. I grew up in Pella my entire life. I actually got married and had to move away last year, but I'm back here frequently to help with the disc golf course as I was the main person who went before the board. I also have been the person who has been doing a lot of the organizing and figuring out where the fairways would be, and I feel like there's some misconception of what we're doing out there. We are not just walking out there with chainsaws, cutting everything down in sight, clearing the woods. We want to respect the woods. We want the woods. That's part of the fun. The reason we would go to Big Rock Park over Central Park is because it's hard, not because it's easy. We want the trees. We're not out there clearing down the big trees. We haven't cut down any tree that is, I would consider, I guess, I don't know what the, exactly what the definition of a mature tree is, but we have not cut down any of the big trees. And if I had to count on two hands how many trees we cut down, I don't think I could. We have cleared out mostly invasive species. We've cleared out some of the ground on our fairway, and a lot of those studies show that if you keep that ground cleared, that those invasive species aren't going to come back because it kills them. If you keep the levels of grass low enough, that those invasive species aren't going to come back. That may not be true for everything, and I'm not the expert on that, and I would be fine with hearing how to better do that and how to better go about keeping out the invasive species, because we like the park, too. We've actually done a lot to clear the paths. Two or three times, there have been trees down in the paths that have nothing to do with our disc golf course, but we're out there cleaning up, and we clean up that path for you as well. So we're not just all about ourselves. We're trying to help the city. We want to increase the use of the park. We want to get people out there. Every time that I'm out there, today we were out there, we were the only ones. There were three of us. We didn't see a single other person out there. And it's been that way. We've been there since August until now. We've been clearing things out and setting up our fairways, and we just don't see that many people. I think a lot of the people here live adjacent to We have not made our course on any of the walking paths. It's all inside the woods, inside your walking paths, because we're trying, we don't want the walking paths to go away. We just like to add another recreational activity out there. Thank you.
I just wanted to add my voice to the record as a supporter of someone who seeks solace at Big Rock Park. I go to Big Rock Park to get away from the noise of lawn mowers and blowers and cars honking and sirens and to just be in a place where I can walk and listen to birds and look for the different kinds of fungi and sometimes get my boots muddy walking in the wet season. And there's a trail that goes up to where there's a bench. And I've often thought about bringing my book and sitting there and just having a quiet place to read my book out in nature. I've been going to Big Rock Park for the last 35 years, from when I was a college student at Central and then the years beyond that to where I've been a resident. I live on Hazel Street. And so, I do have to cross town and get to Big Rock from elsewhere. And often, when I go, there aren't a lot of other people. Maybe it's the times of days that I go, but I can say that the very first time I went to Big Rock in April this year, for this season, I was shocked to find those big cement slabs. And you may not cross the trail, but you're right off the trail. And, you know, we were just out there walking last week Thursday, and one of those slabs just is right adjacent to the trail. So, I guess I don't, I'm still having a hard time understanding how this project happened without more input from the public or more notice so that one of these kinds of sessions could happen before the damage was done to the environment that can't be undone to a virgin forest. And in terms of mountain biking, I like the idea of that, and I think there are places where that is a good use, but that spot out there at Big Rock is just so precious to this community. It's the only little track of Pella where I can go and feel like I can walk in a place where I'm not going to have lawn chemicals that I'm breathing and where, I don't know, where I can just feel like I'm in the woods, like I'm in the mountains somewhere without going out of the city limits. I don't have to drive anywhere. I can get there on my bike. So, I just wanted to add that as one more voice for a place to have solitude and solace and have quiet. And I get, and the noise and traffic of a sport, a competitive sport in the park, I guess would be an incompatible use for walking and hiking and observing nature.
Can I ask you, your name?
Lisa, I'm sorry, Lisa Rock. I'm such a Hazel Street.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Mary Stark, and I have written to all of you and appreciated the Monarch Pollinator Project that we're doing. I'm so thrilled with it.
I haven't found any of mine yet, but I'm hopeful.
Well, and to underscore that, that is a step in the right direction, I think. And even though I don't live close to the park, I've been involved in the park with different ages of education, from college students, of course, but also Jefferson Elementary, third graders, fifth graders, who've been out there using it as a classroom in that faction. So, I'm hopeful that we can still retain this as an educational classroom. And the letter from Joan to me and the letter from Ann Lenartz to me indicated their wishes to continue with that as well because it's a terrific opportunity. We have very few of these little treasures left, as you know. It's also a savanna, which is another endangered ecosystem, just as we have with prairies, the tall grass prairies. This is an open savanna. It used to be more open, as I understand it. And that in itself is an endangered ecosystem. Now, I would really ask for a more comprehensive overview of the park. I appreciate all of the perspectives we've heard today, but when we did plant surveys of the park, for instance, there are four orchids in the park, one of which is a state threatened species. It's Speranthys ovalis. It's a lady trussus orchid that flowers in October. Some people may not even know it's there. So, my concern, as someone who's loved the park for the, I've been here 30-some years, is that maybe we don't know what we're doing comprehensively with all of these perspectives. And I would welcome the opportunity to study it more thoroughly, to update these plant lists, to see what plans other people have and how we can maybe work together with this because it is a treasure. There are very, very few places left. As we know, with Iowa, it used to be 85% tall grass prairie and most of the rest was savanna. Now, we have 1/10th of 1% of prairie left. And the ecosystems are even more fragile. So, you know, Neil Smith, we're trying to restore the savannas as well as the tall grass prairie. We have a treasure here in Pella, and I want us to remember that it is a treasure and it's our stewardship to take care of it. So, thank very much for your time.
Mayor, City Councilman, we really appreciate again the chance to talk to you. Again, I love, I love the fact that we have this huge representation of our community here. It's awesome. And I just want to note that, you know, that whole idea for the people, by the people is really representative here because to me, this isn't about winning or losing. It's about people being able to share their opinions, their beliefs, their thoughts. And that's the primary issue, I think. In addition to Pete Lucille's letter, we just didn't have a chance to really, I think, share thoughts about this before this was approved. And, you know, Scott talked about this being snuck in. I think the perception of that really stems from this not going through the city council, it going through the Community Services Board, which I wasn't even aware was it, was something until I just happened to pick up something and read it. And so, I think that's one of the most problematic issues here, folks. It's not that, it's a bad thing altogether. It's just recognizing that you want to give people the opportunity to share their thoughts. Was the city council in unanimous agreement on this? I can't find any documentation in the minutes that it was. I can't even find where it was approved, even by the Community Services Board. So, you know, I don't have an issue with the disc golf club. I think it's an awesome sport. I've played the 18-hole course at Central. I've played nine-hole course out at Roberts Creek badly, as my daughters will attest, but I've tried. And I understand their frustrations as well. They're kind of like caught in the middle here because they, you know, are in the midst of development. But, you know, as I listen to people, I remember that ultimately, this, it doesn't matter what I want, what any of the citizens here want. It really matters what Pete Lucille wanted. And I think that's the most important thing that we need to be considering because we can all provide valid arguments, you know, why. I think we can, and you've heard valid arguments. And I appreciate the courtesy touching base with Adam Farver, but, you know, with all due respect to Adam, he doesn't live here. I don't even think he lives in the state of Iowa. He comes here for business. So, again, I appreciate the courtesy of you contacting him, but sort of the Community Services Board, but to me, that seems just kind of irrelevant. And, again, I understand from a legal precedent standpoint, I have no idea how long this quick claim deed, you know, stands in effect. I realize legal precedents change. But the question you need to be asking yourself is this, is this really a legal issue or is it a moral and ethical law? And to me, it really is because it's tied to a cornerstone family in this city. And that's what is really important for you to consider. So, that's my two cents.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Dan Lowen. I first moved to Pella back in the fall of 2009 to start my undergraduate education at Central. I graduated as a double major in math and physics and moved back two years later and have been a resident on Washington Street ever since. So, while I have not lived in this wonderful community as long as some of the other people have spoken tonight, it has become my home and I love this community. I love everything it's given to me. And when discussions began in amongst the disc golf club about potential course at Big Rock, I was ecstatic about having the opportunity to give back to a community that's given so much to me and hoping that others would come out and experience a hobby that I love in disc golf. I started playing in college. I was introduced to the sport by a couple of friends. And through that, as I look out across the audience members here, I see friends that I've made have helped me not only get better at disc golf, but also with many personal issues and other such matters. As for the disc golf course itself, while I agree that a 4x10 concrete pad might not be the most natural thing, so to speak, I would argue that it's no more or less aesthetically attractive or unattractive than some of the park benches that lay throughout the park for resting and other such things. And I would like to restate some of the points that Mark made, where we don't want to cut down the trees. We want to utilize the natural beauty, the topography, and the layout of this park to make a wonderful course, something that this community can use, something that families can come out and use. And I don't think that the intention was to ruin or take away from this natural place where people go to relax and to be safe. And to anybody who hasn't gone out and walked the course, I'd really encourage you to do so because I think it would speak volumes to what we're trying to accomplish out there and how little of an impact you're trying to have on the park. Thank you for your time.
I'm Donnie Boat, and I live in Pella, Iowa. And I say, oh deer. I've always fought the deer. They eat everything. And I wondered why I was having so much more of a problem now than I've ever had before. I mean, they're walking up my front sidewalk while I eat lunch, and it's because they can't go home. You've invaded their territory.
My name is Rhonda Boat, and I live at 510 Broadway Street. I just learned about this maybe a couple of weeks ago. And so, I've appreciated listening to everyone's point of view. And I've come before the council many times, and many times, people have told me how passionate I am, usually with reference to historic homes. Actually, my passion is that the government is by the people and for the people. And I think that it is sad that we are having again another discussion take place between concerned groups of citizens after a project has been started. I think I can, I can understand where both sides come from. One side was given the go-ahead and now they're, you know, they're upset. Another side was surprised and they're upset. And from what I have read, that shouldn't have happened. And I think the biggest, the biggest question is, why wasn't there a unanimous vote by the city council before this took place? And before the unanimous vote, there should have been a policy of planning meeting. And that's what I'm passionate about, is for citizens to be heard before something is started. Thank you.
I want to make sure you give everybody the opportunity.
Mr. Mayor, City Councilman, my name is Mike Boss. I've been a member of Pella since, I grew up in Leighton. I've been a member of Pella since 1997. I'm here as a member of Ramba. Of course, I'm going to go and go out and show my support for mountain bike trails. I think we've got two issues going on here, and I'm not going to be one to speak to the disc golf course. I more want to speak to the mountain bike trail system. I think if we were going to look at environmental impact, I think we need to go no further than the case study that we have right here at North Overlook. So, I would invite, you know, any member of the council, any member of this room to go out there and witness the current environmental impact that we have there. And I think we can find that this neighborhood is very small. Actually, there's really no more impact than walking trails. And I think that we, as members of Ramba, we're not looking to have a huge impact on Big Rock Park as it's a native environment. I think really what we want to do is incorporate a network of trails that can be one of that environment and not have, you know, a huge environmental impact. And I welcome anybody to come out and share in those trails that we have in North Overlook. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Susan Campfield. I live at 1203 Shadow Lane, and I used to live at Westwood Drive. We have spent a lot of time in Big Rock Park in the years since we have lived here, especially because we got a puppy about a year and a half ago, and we take that dog there all the time. We went today before we came because I, over, we've been walking through the park all winter and kind of watching the process of the disc golf course going in. And there, you can still see the beauty of the park within the course. And I think, so I'm kind of different, I'm in the middle because I see the value of the disc golf course. I see the value of getting people at the park and I see keeping people who are doing drugs and selling them away from the park. But I also am concerned about the remaining holes and where they're going to go because that, honestly, that scares me and I'm kind of worried about those. And we didn't walk all the holes tonight. We just looked at them. We have walked the whole park within the past year multiple, multiple times through snowdrifts and different things. And the value of the hiking trails and the peace that you find at the park is precious. I do think getting the park, more people at the park is a good thing too. So, I, I just think we need to think about, as we move forward, I will say, as someone who walks the park, I need to learn more about mountain biking because that scares the jeebies out of me to be walking at the park and have a bike come up, especially with a big dog and a little dog. So, I just ask, they just think about whatever, I think there have been a lot of really good comments, but I did, we were, we had seen a lot of stuff get cleared out, but a lot of it has grown and this, there, you can really see the woods through. It's still a forest, but there are concerns on both sides. Thank you.
Stand by, 1156 Westwood Drive, directly across the street from Sioux. I just learned about this yesterday, not knowing, and granted, I don't keep up with the city politics, but my kids grew up in that park. Earlier this spring, I had a chance to take a couple of my grandkids to this park. Had a wonderful time. We talk about the disc golf and the mountain bike, I'm not, I'm not opposed to either one of them, but I don't think they belong in Big Rock. I think there has to be a better location. But if it would expand the way it has been explained, the park cannot stay the way it is. There's not, there's not room for that kind of traffic that we're talking about. The growth study, that I don't know has been, if it has been done, what is, what is said? And besides that, I want somebody to tell me where they can find 53 acres of native timber. And it's been said already, Pella has a gift here. It is a wonderful piece of history that dates back to the beginning of time, back to creation. Where can we, in the state of Iowa, other than maybe like Legis State Park and places like that, where can you find a city that has native timber? I think it'd be hard pressed to find it. And native timber does not just consist of mature trees, it's a whole ecosystem, it's the underbrush, it's the, it's the shrub trees have no economic value, but at the same time, they are part of the system. Furthermore, is economic development the price we pay to give up native timber? Thank you.
I guess I'll stand over here then. Not one for speeches, but I really am behind backing the mountain biking trails because again, as we've been saying, there's maybe, maybe as much impact as a hiking trail. And again, look at Red Rock to see that. I myself have gotten hours upon hours of enjoyment of nature by taking my bike out there for either a hard ride or just a little hour-long, pretty, take it easy, you know? And I've introduced a few of my friends to it and they just love it. The thing about it is, a lot of people think it's, have a misunderstanding of how much it does on the environment because we're not out there to make our trail and be crazy with it, you know? We're out there to make it, to take the nature and see it in a different light as we get our exercise and whatnot. But looking again at Red Rock and how little the trail actually does, we go around all the trees, we make our trail based on what the land is saying to do. I mean, there's not much to it. There's a tree, you go around it. If there's a hill, you go up or down it. There's, and they're skinnier than the hiking trails even. And again, at Red Rock, there's, I would say there's almost as mu, there's at least as much walking traffic on the biking trails, which, I mean, when you're biking can be a little bit of a problem, but otherwise, it's great. It's just another way for people to go out there and enjoy the nature.
I'm sorry, I'm Mr. Cooper Boss. I'm Mike's son.
Hello, my name is Joe Kauzan. I live at 1109 Edgewater, a couple blocks away from Big Rock Park. I'm the lead advocate for Ramba. So over the last year and a half, I worked with EMBA to get our chapter going. As Chris mentioned, EMBA is here to help us build, maintain and sustainable trails. We have their resources at hand to come out and help us and teach us what we need to know. When I presented to the city two years ago, our plan was to not intersect any walking paths, to keep it separate from, from the rest of the park, but utilize the nature. The plan was, was only cutting down the grass, the weeds, no trees were going down, leverage what the land gave us the whole time. As Chris again said, minimal impact. We have studies from EMBA we can share, we'd be glad to share. I, I also would love to see a study done about impact, if that's truly what it is. You've heard from some young people here today, if you're really thinking about the growth of Pella and understanding how we want to get back to the community, look at, look at fun, exciting activities. I think the solitude of the, of the park will still be there. Mountain biking is not a loud sport, either is disc golf. I think we can all work together to come up with some sort of arrangement to make the best out of, out of a good situation. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe.
I'm Ben Hedrick. I live on Washington Street. A little history about Big Rock Park for me, sorry. I grew up in Pella, my family has been in Pella both sides. I probably went to Big Rock Park aged two. What I like to see about everything, with everyone coming here, is that it's a group of people that all have interest in the area. I grew up hiking, looking for mushrooms, cross-country skiing, going out with a dog, walking around. As I grew up, I got introduced to disc golf and mountain biking as well, and then I'm a member of Ramba as well. What I like to see is the growth, as Joe has pointed out, Chris has pointed out, and the disc golf community has pointed out, we're there to utilize the natural environment. We're not really there to inhibit it. We're going to enhance it to the best of our abilities while making it as safe as we can for all user groups while we're out in the facility. I'm really excited to see where we move forward from this, whether, I would hope that we all work together, we find a common plan. I do agree, as we pointed out earlier, restroom facilities at the park, I know I've had times where I've had to run back to my house, which is a couple miles away, just to be able to go to the restroom. But as long as we all work forward and work together, I think it can be a safe way to utilize the natural environment, just like I've done my entire life. That's it.
I'm Tony Dudley. I live on Westford Street. I've lived in Pella for almost four years now. I've heard a lot tonight about sides and sides that want this, sides that want that, but almost everybody, everybody has been really passionate about the woods, the quiet space, the, what they find special about this, from every, every side. We all have this passion. I think instead of throwing rocks at each other, we need to figure out how to work together. I mean, this woods that we all love, all these different plants, they all have different functions, different ways of living, but they all work together. I think we can totally do this with our various ways of expressing our passion for this woods.
Going, going. Gone. We'll move on. And next step is adjournment. Do I hear motion to adjourn? And we will go on to policy and planning after adjournment, so the discussion hasn't ended, it's just time for the meeting to end. And then we will go into an informal discussion by the council on this issue, as well as one other one, and it's getting late enough, quite frankly, that we'll probably, wasn't there two issues? Yeah, that's been discussed. So is it, can we? Better ask them. I would defer that, if that was I, then.
That's fine, we can inform us, we can get it on the next go-round. I think we're okay with that.
Yeah. Okay. Then, so we're good to push that one back to the next one? Because we're getting late in the meeting at this point. Yeah, yeah. All right, very good. So do I hear motion to adjourn? So, Block Ovitt, support Ski Bow, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no, clerk call a roll.
Block Ovitt?
Yes.
Ski Bow?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Deion?
Yes.
Randerhorst?
Yes.
Dan Stilley?
Yes.
Very good. We are adjourned and we'll take a two-minute break for any necessary visits and then we will reconvene right back here momentarily.